Okay, good morning, everyone. It is eight thirty-two on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a regular meeting of the town in New Canaan Board of Selectment. And first, we're going to amend the agenda. Tiger has a late-breaking bid. So I move we have been the agenda to add disposal recycling material contract for approval. Twenty-three, twenty-four. Second?
Second.
Favor? Okay, and we'll we'll slot that in after Tiger's other contract matters. So this minutes of our last meeting. On June twenty-second. Any comments or questions?
None here.
I move your proof minutes.
Second.
On favor.
Bye.
Hi.
Thank you. Public comments. This is a hybrid meeting of the Board of Selectment. Comments from the public are welcome on agenda topics scheduled for review and a vote. Comments submit maybe submitted electronically by emailing to B O S distribution at N C T dot gov and we will read any comments before the end of the meeting or submitted to the minutes. Any members of the public wish to speak now?
Janay.
Tucker, we're gonna have people stand at the podium because.
That's better.
And pull the microphone close to your.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Janay Hunter. I live in Bennington. I've got three children in the New Canaan Public Schools. I am here because I am strongly protesting building a west, a cell tower behind West School. I did not even have prepared remarks. We just found out about this. I have a few things to ask. One is whether or not people agree with the information about health, which I know is not allowed before the citing committee, but is allowed for the town to consider. Why would we have our kids be guinea pigs? Towns such as Palo Alto, all of San Diego County, Los Angeles, Colorado, Aspen, Colorado, Vale have all banned cell towers within either a thousand or fifteen hundred feet of elementary schools. Local towns around here had decided not to put them, including Westport by elementary schools. Why are we not as good as the stands, if not better? We can do better. The World Health Organization has spoken out against him. The E P A has asked the F C C to reexamine the health data because it's old since nineteen ninety-six. Our children shouldn't be guinea pigs. And I just I'm surprised that five years later, it's still on the table when there's more information and more scientific evidence that there are dangers to these. And whether or not you believe it, and I know Kevin doesn't because we've discussed this, but whether or not you do, our town's better. We don't need to put one by a playground of our elementary school. People moved to New Canaan for our elementary schools, and I just don't understand why we'd devalue the school and put our children at risk. We are better than this. The other thing I ask is the timing of this is very suspicious that this being brought over the summer when West School is out. The P T C doesn't have a mechanism to inform the West student body and the West parents. In three days, we have had multiple people, they're starting a petition, people are upset, but the P T C can't even get involved. I asked that before this is considered any further, you put at least on hold until school is back in session. It looks really sketchy to do this right now, honestly. I've gotten thirteen text messages last night. Four of them use the word sketchy, three said underhanded, others said unethical. You all don't want to be that bored who is doing this in a time when it looks like people are trying to slip this in under the table when parents are not here and when people cannot speak out. So I at least asked you just to put this on hold. Kevin apparently told the Republican group last night, he planned to submit this to the siding council in September. That doesn't give us.
That's not what I said. No, I don't want to say it last night. I'll correct that.
Oh, okay. Please correct that because that's what I was told was said last night. I'm not, I wasn't at the Republican meeting. Someone who was there told me that was what was said. But in any event, please put this on hold at very least. I think we shouldn't even have to go back to where we were five years ago because I think the same thing's going to happen all over again. So I would rather you all to shelf it. And before when Kevin was running, he had said that he was going to look at private sites, and I actually asked you point blank to if you were going to support a cell tower being put within a hundred thousand feet of a school, and you said, no, that was a dumb idea. So I'm a little surprised that you're back and we only found.
This is eight hundred forty-three feet, so.
Eight hundred forty-three feet from from the back of the school, not from the playground. So let's just be clear. It's I am asking you all to at least put this on hold, but ideally just find different locations by also the topography of our town. This is not great for cell reception. Putting ten cell towers in our beautiful New England town is not the answer.
How many?
Ten. That's what we were told.
We only had five.
Okay, five. Whatever you're trying to do, I understood you're trying to do ten is what I was told. Is that okay? We don't need more cell towers. That's not the issue. Other towns decided West Port's using other technology people. There are other technologies out there. So let's put this on hold. Let's examine other options. I know the ones on private property, we don't much say this one. We've got say on this is up to the town. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me just make a couple of comments. This is this is just the beginning. I expected we were going to announce another cell tower today on the eastern side of town. That is not yet completed, but we, in order to move this along, this is just the beginning today. You know, people take the summer off. So you know, what I said last night is this could get to the siding council by next spring. Early next, early next year. So, but again, I, you know, people are welcome to make comments, but you know, this is just the beginning and we're going to have a discussion today and then you know, there's a whole process this has to go through. So anyway, I I welcome additional comments if you want to make them, but this is just.
I'm Barbara Wills, and I live at one fourteen Bennington Place. I was a resident of a very, very old town in Massachusetts, Hingham, Massachusetts. And I lived in an area where there was triangulation, there was great cell coverage, and my son had a seizure in the stroller and I was in my own driveway and I called nine-one-one and the call dropped. I called nine-one-one and the call dropped again. At that point, I had my toddler run up to the house and grab the the landline phone, which is now analog is no longer available. And I was able to call my local police department on that landline and they handled the medical emergency. And then I went after singular wireless. And I called and I called and I called. My cell bill did not show any calls to nine-one-one. That meant that the tower did not receive those calls. So I kept trying and I had to get Hank Philippi Ryan, the investigative reporter from our local Boston area TV station to go after them. And they finally came and did a test in my driveway and seven out of ten calls to nine-one-one dropped and did not show up on the tower logs. So the perception that having additional cell coverage is going to protect our town residents and anyone who's here is not, it's only as good as the programming of the towers. And it's it's just another tower doesn't mean safety. So that's what I have to say.
Good morning. My name is Megan Kupchak. I have four small children at New Canaan Public Schools. We moved here years ago specifically for the schools. I can assure you, had we known that the town was even under, like considering that they were going to potentially build a cell tower near feet from a child where children spend all day learning and playing. We would moved on. We would have looked at Darian. We would have looked at Westport, towns that don't feel that they need to put a cell tower near small children. It actually makes me really sad that the town, this town that I love and call my home is even considering this. I don't care what you say about the health. I know that there's a lot of controversy about health. The perception alone is that they are not safe and it is not healthy. I don't care what the facts say, and I'm sure that this gentleman who's going to speak about these cell towers has lots of facts saying otherwise, or maybe not. But the perception alone is that they're not safe for children. That being said, why would we put, why would we build something like that? It makes me, I'm like shaking. I'm so upset that there is, this is up for consideration in the town I call home. So I'm imploring you. It it looks careless and cold on behalf of our town, and we're better than that. So that that that's what I have to say, and I said it five years ago, and I'll shout it from the rooftops and and these are not the only five hysterical moms that you're going to hear from. It'll be townwide. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I think you can tell by my attire, I wasn't planning on speaking in front of you this morning. I got informed of this on very short notice. And so obviously, it's something I feel passionately about, and I want to speak with the the committee about. My family and I moved to New Canaan two short years ago. We recently purchased a home on Woods End Road, which puts me squarely in the midst of several controversial subjects at hand. And unfortunately, what was seemingly a blissful community has been quickly wiped away with some of these subjects that we're attacking. And I understand that today's is the building of a cell tower at West School, which is where my four young children do and will continue to go to school. I want to talk to you about advocating for those young children. I understand that there's questions around the health risks. Again, the lovely woman who spoke spoke before me mentioned the even the perception around it. But it's not just our children. It's also their friends and families. The surrounding families who live in the nearby area as well as the staff at the school. Now, we've already discussed that the health risks posed by the cell tower are are well-known. That that the WHO recommends that they're not built within one thousand feet and someone else mentioned within one thousand and fifteen hundred feet in other states. I'm sorry, Kevin, am I boring you?
I just have to turn my phone off. Thank you.
Now Kevin recently corrected us that the initial information that went out was that the tower is going to be built within one hundred feet of the school. He's recently corrected us that it would be one with in one eight hundred.
The last was five hundred feet. This is eight hundred forty-three feet.
I was finishing my sentence and going to state eight hundred forty-three feet from the school, not from the playground. So again, I reiterate that we're jeopardizing the schoolchildren on the playground as well as the families that will surround that cellphone tower and the teachers and staff at the school. Now, I cannot for the life of me comprehend how or why anyone would willingly jeopardize the safety and well-being of our children in what is a completely avoidable circumstance. Not only do we have to be concerned about the risk of guns in schools, but a cellphone tower that can be easily placed in another location seems relatively absurd to me. Furthermore, this seems to be a part of an ever-growing assault on our community and property values. New Canaan is well-known for its grade A schools. Why would we want to willingly purchase? Why would anyone want to willingly purchase property and send their children to schools when they know that there's a cellphone tower within a certain number of feet? Additionally, how do we plan to continue to attract top talent to maintain that grade A rating whenever a teacher is willingly putting him or herself in jeopardy knowingly attending that school where the cellphone tower is? Which begs me the question as to why? It's the town council's responsibility to act in the best interest of the town and its constituents. What is it about putting our children, their teachers' lives at risk and their residents at risk and our property values at risk that is in the best interest of the town? For the life of me, I cannot come to a good answer with the exception of the possibility of a phone call, but that doesn't seem to hold value to me. So what I ask is that the town, not only in this instance, because it's become abundantly clear to me that the town lacks a long-term strategy for the development and growth of the town and the infrastructure in order to support not only the town, but its constituents. We need to take much more of a concerted effort to come up with not only a short term, but a long-term strategy for how we are going to support the town, the infrastructure and its constituents, and I implore you to consider other technologies as opposed to the cellphone tower located square on the grounds of a children's school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I wasn't expecting to speak. But this matters to everyone.
Do you identify yourself?
Kelly. Dervlin O. New Canaan. And I, the cellphone tower, I don't think the way we're going about it represents who we are as a town, as a collective people group. And what I mean by that is that so many of us found out about that this was proposed on eleven o'clock last night. It it gives a sense of secrecy, backroom deals. It's just not who we are. And if this was the first time, we'd be like, ah, well, this is how politics go, right? Like, oh, they're having a meeting about a cellphone tower right before the Fourth of July when no one's around. Okay, but the thing about the carp, whatever that whole thing that is, that was right before winter break. And the thing about the police station, that meeting was what I think right before Thanksgiving. So there seems to be like habitual, oh, we want to get, and we have an agenda, let's do it when no one's around. And that's, and I don't think it's intentional of you, Kevin. I just don't. Because that would seem we just, it's not us at our best. And so I think just more transparency on this would go a long way. And checks and balances. You have people on each side of you, like we we can just do better and we hold each other accountable as a town, and that's who we are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else in the room? We have some online, but is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Oh, okay. Justin Nishioka?
Yes, thank you for I just, I'm so proud of my fellow community members and the opponents who have made their voices heard on this issue. I want to reiterate every, everything that they've stated. The the public safety issue will come up in this in this matter. And I submitted a FOIA request to the town of New Canaan for all first responder responder reports where cell service or lack thereof was mentioned. There wasn't a single report in the history of this town where pub where cell service or lack thereof was mentioned in any first responder reports. I'd also just like to note that there are much better options for our town on how we want to provide cell service to this community. And the best way to do that is through small cells. Small cells can be placed on utility poles on existing infrastructure. There are numerous locations that can be look that these small cells can be located. I know that there will be people from the public safety who I know are incredibly good at what they do, who care about our community. I know that they also have properties that are located near this location, and perhaps they can offer their properties as possible locations for either a small cell or even a tower so that our children are not put at risk for the health risks of a cell tower. I strongly encourage us to look into that as a possible option for addressing our towers, our town's needs for cell service. And again, I'm just so moved and touched by all of my fellow community members and opponents of this. So thank you for everyone.
Thank you, Justin.
If anybody else online would like to speak, if you could raise your your virtual hand. Recognize you. No, because he's sore. I'm trying to, he keeps unmuting himself. I don't see anybody more. Any in addition.
Okay, as I mentioned before, this is only the beginning. The timing of this was intended to be with another tower on the east side of town, which is very close to being consummated. And and then there's another location in the center of town we have to deal with. You know, we we only have five cell tower locations in New Canaan compared to fourteen thousand in Manhattan, same size landmass. And anyway, all these issues will be addressed over the next several months. Kathleen and I have been working on this for nine years on the town council. And you've been dealing with this for over ten years. And so again, this is only the beginning. This will come to the town council by September, October.
That's assuming the board of selectmen push it through.
Well.
Right, you know, I remember two thousand seventeen, I was on this board. So I'm wondering why we're going back down this path.
That's the discussion that we have today.
And I'm very much in favor of cellphone towers, as you know, but I mean, I'm not sure, you know, we've got pandemics, we've got scream outs at at our park with city because of Roe versus Wade. We've got eight, you know, eight thirty thirty G applications. I just, I'm not sure. It gets to be cumbersome and tiresome. And I just, I would just I'm not sure it's worth it. I think it's probably a great location, and I I personally think the health implications are not as as bad as, you know, advertised, but I, for me, the concern is just having another emotional issue in town where we've got yard signs and we've got people going crazy, and I'm not sure it's worth it. So I just been putting it out there.
Anyway, Mr. Ray Brigati is here for Homeland Towers. Homeland Tower was selected by an RFP in two thousand sixteen to be the town's partner in solving our cell service problem. Ray is going to present very briefly, less than fifteen minutes, the proposed location and plan. And as I said, this will be, this is just the beginning. We have a hearing today with the Connecticut Siding Council on the what is it, eighteen thirty-seven?
Eighteen thirty-seven, yes.
Eighteen thirty-seven, Bonus Ridge Road by the Connecticut Siding Council.
Is that, is that the address of of West School?
Eighteen thirty. Eighteen thirty-seven, Punch Ridge is the address of the proposed site in the northwest corner.
Northwest corner, right. I I meant Dan's Highway and
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there'll be a public hearing tonight at six thirty. It's all by Zoom. They haven't returned to in-person meetings, but so there's opportunity to learn more. I was looking yesterday at the town's website. We have all this information that we've been working on for the past ten years about cell towers and our plan. There is a plan we've been working on diligently with Homeland Towers, our partner in solving this problem. So.
To be to be clear, that's a different situation because it's private property.
Property. Correct.
As opposed to what we're going to be discussing with respect to the West school location, which is which is public property.
Ray was explaining the process for considering alternative locations. So Ray, good morning, and go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. First, I'm money hand, selecting Corbett, selectman Williams. For the record, Ray Brigati, I'm the regional manager at Homeland Towers. Homeland Towers is a developer out of Danbury, Connecticut, or a smaller regional tower company. We tend to focus primarily in Connecticut, Westchester, Duchess, Putnam Counties of New York, Long Island in New Jersey. We pride ourselves on doing difficult sites in difficult areas. We've been doing this, or I've personally been doing this for twenty-two years. The carriage rely on us as an infrastructure builder to bring this into towns. When I say infrastructure, just says water, electric, gas, sewer, cell service and public safety and cell towers has become critical infrastructure. Doing sort of past twenty-two years, I would be my fourth or fifth site in New Canaan. I did the site at Silver Hill a number of years ago. I did the site over on one eighty-three Soundview Lane, which we're very proud of and how it turned out, very happy. We're currently working on, as Suckman Williams mentioned, a site located at eighteen thirty-seven Punch Ridge Road in a northwest corner, that's before the siding council, the Saturday noon for a public hearing. And I'm here before you today to just give a brief overview of a proposed location. We're trying to work with the town, obviously, on town property located at seven, six, nine, Bonus Ridge, which is the West Elementary School. I brought some boards that I can speak to and give you folks a simple overview. The parcel itself is forty-seven point forty-seven acres. It's a very large parcel, obviously. Bonus Ridge Road runs in front of the school. I think everyone is familiar with the site per se. We are proposing a location in the back portion of the school in reference where the water tank is, where we are proposing it to be downgrade from the existing aquarium water tank. As Kevin mentioned, Homeland was selected back in two thousand sixteen as a partner with the town and went through a very rigorous RFP process. And we're awarded to be the partnership of the town to build this critical infrastructure. We came before the town in twenty seventeen with this particular site along with Irwin Park. And I think the message we heard from Kevin back then was, let's try to solve the coverage issues in the northeast and the northwest sections of town. And, you know, we looked at those two locations. The town did not have any town property to offer. So we went and looked at private properties. So we put our head down and were successful and obviously constructing the site over in Soundview and hopefully with some luck will be doing the same on the northwest side on eighteen thirty-seven Punch Ridge. So the understanding was, we'll put our head down, we'll sell these coverage and public safety issues in the northeast and the northwest sections, and then we would come back. We didn't want the impression that people are getting picked on in a certain area of town. We wanted to make this a comprehensive coverage plan for for everybody in New Canaan. So that is why I'm back here before the board of selectmen this morning. From a timing perspective, we have a carrier that's been waiting patiently. They have a need for this area. We know all the carriers have a need for this area, but we have one particular carrier that is currently funded, and they're asking us to, let's bring this forward. So from a time perspective, the time is now. There is a process for this. It's a public process. It's a very transparent process. Because this is town property, this will go before various boards, be it town council, P and Z, Board of Selectmen and so forth. Ultimately, the Connecticut State Siding Council out in Britain will have the ultimate say as far as approval or disapproval of the facility that's proposed here. So just to get into the general site plan, this is not set in stone. We'd be working with the town going forward in more detailed drawings. But we are proposing actually two options. We were originally in two thousand seventeen, Aquarian House is existing. I think it's a hundred foot by a hundred foot square parcel where there existing sixty-five foot plus or take water tank is located. We were about a hundred and twenty feet from that tank. We did visuals, meaning we floated a balloon. We proposed what the visual would look like for a site there. And for the discussions with the town, Kevin specifically had said, you know, can you move it further down downgrade, down slope, get it further away from the school? And certainly, this is an open conversation, an open dialogue that we have with any landlord in this case, potentially the town. So we did, we moved it further downgrade. Initially, back in two thousand seventeen, we were proposing a hundred and fifteen foot monopine structure. That elevation where the water tank was was roughly three hundred and sixty feet ground elevation. Where we've moved it down to, it's about three hundred and twenty feet. So we've lost forty feet in elevation. However, we would like to go from a proposed hundred and fifteen foot monopine to a hundred and twenty-five foot monopine. We've had this agreement with the town that we would try to keep structures one-ten and below. Certain circumstances, if a tower structure was justified or needed, we would ask for that. So we are asking for a hundred and twenty-five foot monopine. Now, keep in mind that height justification will need to go before the siding council. As a tower developer, I don't pick the height of one twenty-five. This comes from the engineers, the radio frequency engineers. They're the ones that have to justify the need for the location and for the height. So siding council during that process will make the carriers justify a one-twenty-five foot structure. It could be lower. We don't know that. We do have two options. We're calling it a preferred location, option A. And then there's an option B, which is off of Winfield Lane. Access, we have a different couple of routes for location A. We can come in. There's an existing access road that Aquarian uses to get to the water tank. It's already there. They access across the parking lot in the rear of the school and bring their vehicles in for maintenance down a dirt road and then veer off left to where the water tank is. But this dirt road continues all the way down the property line. Our thought is is to utilize that existing access drive. It avoids any removal of trees, obviously. And we would be able to get to the option A tower site. The option B tower site is off of Winfield Lane. It's just an option. We always like to give a landlord specific options on a property for consideration. If the tower, the tower were to consider option B in this, and at the cul-de-sac, obviously, access, when I say access, I mean utilities as well would come off of Winfield Lane.
Is that through an easement or town property?
It's all town property.
It's all town property. On Winston Lane? On Winston Lane?
Can you even speak into your microphone?
Yep, yeah, if you can, stay with the mic.
This is just a zoomed in view of the two options again for reference point, uh, this is north pointing up, this is south. Ponys Ridge Road is running north, south and front here. Winfield is running here with the cul-de-sac, Bennington Place is running over here. This is the water tank that's existing, uh, that Aquarian is right there. So this is the option A I was speaking of, this is the option B. Um, this is the option to come in for existing access in utilities, that's already there. Well, the road is, we would have to place utilities, which would be trenched underground through ever source. Um, the access, there's another potential point we could look at coming in. Uh, off the back parking lot, running parallel to the field and then cutting into the woods. Um, there are no wetland crossings where we're proposing option A or option B, there are some wetlands on the property, uh, but we are not disturbing any wetlands. Any specific questions I can answer on this?
Is that West School property, Board of Ed property outlined in black?
Yes, the, the dashed black line is the property line, it's not a true rectangular parcel, it shuts down and goes all the way down, it's again forty-seven point forty-seven acres.
Half a bathtub, right, so everything else to the north is town property or?
All town property.
It's all, uh, well, for reference, this is north, which is private property, this is the outline, it shuts down.
So option B moves everything to the north?
I'm sorry?
Option B moves.
Option B, we go slightly, uh, slightly further north on the property.
How far is that from the school?
Uh, the option B location was seven hundred and fifty-four feet.
And that's seven hundred and fifty-four feet to the property line?
To the corner of the building, to the corner of the school structure, correct, yes.
And how far is it to? How, uh, school property, the property line?
It's, um.
Well, there's no, there is no property.
So this is the property line here, which is, which is a town.
Talking Board of Ed.
Yeah.
That has six acres on the, the first six acres of the forty-seven.
Okay.
That they have jurisdiction over a school property, there's no school activity in the balance of the forty-four acres.
To your answer your question, I think we're getting at, we are from the property line coming in off of Winfield.
Yeah.
Uh, we're approximately two hundred feet in off of, off the, the cul-de-sac there. And the reason why we're not further in, uh, there's some wetlands that are over there. Now, there's another option that's not put on the table here, um, and it can be certainly open for further discussion, but if the town would, could consider this. What we think is the best location, uh, which is, we're calling option A. Uh, but did not want access through any portion of the existing school grounds, be it the parking lot coming in. Um, we could logistically bring access road off of Winfield straight to option A. That would, uh, encompass a wetland crossing, um, it's a very intermittent wetland, we're not talking a river or a stream that flows. Um, but it's flagged as wetlands because of soil, it's about fifteen feet wide. Um, but that's an option, it's not unheard of, uh, just was approved in a town of Sherman, where I have two wetland crossings. We try to avoid it, we try to avoid any type of disturbance, be it environmental, visual, but certainly that could be an option for us.
Ray, could you address, Kathy, do you have questions?
Yeah, I may.
Alright.
Go on. Thank you, Ray, I, I'll obviously give you some time to continue, but I'm just curious, on the forty-seven point seven eight acres, obviously that's a big space. How far did you try to get further, at least a thousand feet away? Uh, and, and were there any issues? I know to the east of that property, there seems to be quite a lot of land, have you considered anything there? And I don't understand, I don't see the topography on here, but.
Sure, so the topography goes from a high point of roughly three hundred and sixty feet where the water tank is, and typically water tanks run the highest point for gravity, obviously. Um, we didn't, we were originally, uh, here on the, in this location, we did push it down, uh, another. Three, four hundred feet further down slope, and as I mentioned, we lost about forty feet in elevation. Um, what we have here, and it's maybe a little difficult to see, this light dotted line right here is wetlands. So we can't push it really much further because then we get into, um, putting a cell tower compound in the middle of, uh, wetlands, obviously, and that's, that's a no-no.
Um, but how far back, I mean, it's a great question, Kathy, how far to the east do we own?
Quite a distance.
Three thousand feet, forty-seven acres?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Let me go back to the first one.
And we, and we can't put a cell phone tower there because of wetlands.
No, one, one is the topography, it drops off significantly.
Well, that was my other question, yeah.
Be a hundred eighty feet tall to, to work back there.
I'm sorry, I know the number. My house is on the, see that checkerboard piece? I'm in the middle of that. Line that's sort of diagonal down there, and at the back of my property, it is a hundred and sixty-five foot vertical drop from the top of Bennington Place. So it goes like this.
I mean, that means the tower doesn't work.
It, it would be, it would be really, really low if you made it a hundred and twenty-five feet, and it's also. Very disturbed there because when they, when they painted that water tower, they rebuilt that accessway, Aquarian did, this was not you. This, so they rebuilt the accessway, and when we had the seven inch and the four inch and the five inch rains last summer. The whole. Uh, catch basin that they had organized, organized because they took away the original catch basin from when they built West School. That washed out, so it's just now this giant diagonal culvert on both sides of the road, then they built a road. A, a, a big culvert underneath the road because they have to be able to drive their heavy trucks up to the water tower. And all of that water came flying through and absolutely washed out half of my property, three times. And I luckily have the means to reorganize it. But if they're going to do any kind of driving on that air access road that exists. If you go right now and look at it, it's all washed out. All of that rain that's un, it's, it's an unpaved surface, so you're not, it's, it's already disturbed, so that's all I have to say about that, it's rough.
I, I, I would ask everyone, you know, we have to get through this today, and we want to be brief because, um. Thank you.
So just, I think to go back to next question, going to the east, uh, the property line touches, I believe it's called Llewellyn Drive. Um, the elevation's extremely low there, obviously, it's all wet. And as much as we would love to tuck a tower even further down slope, it doesn't check the box for the carriers, obviously, for the location.
Got, option A, to be clear, is what went down in flames in two thousand seventeen, is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Option A is what we considered, uh, as a board of selectmen in two thousand seventeen.
Option A is close, um, option, originally we were about a hundred feet away from the water tank. Um, now we've moved, it kind of is in line still, but further down, about another four hundred feet away. From the water tank, four, five hundred feet away, I believe, so it's in the general vicinity, but further down slope and further away from the school, obviously.
Ray, let's not get into too much detail about the site because this is just a preliminary introduction, we're, we're not going to take any action to it.
No, absolutely not.
Um, but also I want you to address the other possible locations that you've talked to other people, other institutional owners in the area.
Yeah, I, I don't give out, um, exact addresses because it's a private matter, I'm talking to other landlords. Um, it's part of my due diligence, whenever I'm doing a cell tower in an area, I, I vet the area for what we think is appropriate parcels. Um, those letters have been sent out, obviously, I've been, uh, speaking to a few folks, um. I don't share addresses because it's a private matter, obviously, this is public information, it's town property. Um, but right now, there's nothing concrete that I can say that we're going on private property, no one's committed.
And the setting council will ask you what other locations you consider?
Yeah, there's a process for siding council, there'll be a public hearing in town, um, with the town, there's a ninety-day tech review process, it's a public information meeting. This is not an overnight process, uh, this would take the better of fifteen months per se if this were to go through. Um, and the siding council, that's everything, there's a number of items that we produce, visual reports, health and safety reports, environmental reports. Um, it's a rather thick application. Um, I would like to add that, you know, a lot of people seem to think it's, you're setting precedent on putting these facilities on school properties or in schools. It's not the case whatsoever, um, and I have furnished a list to the town previously. Um, I think just in the state of Connecticut, there's about thirty-five or so cell sites, be it existing towers or rooftops. Um, on school properties, on school rooftops, less than a thousand feet away, and it's about thirty-five, forty of them. Um, I think the town of, uh, Portland has, at the high school is twenty feet from the school building. And what I tell people also is, it's kind of. You know, all these schools are wired for wifi, and I don't go down to health and safety, where the experts will speak to that, obviously, but it's a wireless world we live in. All these schools are wild, wired for wifi with patch antennas. Sitting above people's heads, six feet above their heads on a daily basis, and no one really makes a fuss over that. Because maybe it's not a convenient fuss, um, but I will say that you have a cell tower. Here in town, eleven hundred feet away from your school, from your high school, and I call it a cell tower because it's really a water tank. Disguised as a cell tower, whatever you want to call it, but all the carriers and public safety around there, and that's eleven hundred feet away from your high school. I don't hear people saying I'm going to pull my kids from the school, I'm not going to move to this town because there's a. Site so close to the high school, which incidentally is less than a hundred feet away from a playing field. So everyone has an opinion and I respect opinions, um, this one lady mentioned facts versus perception, we can only go on facts, obviously. And, you know, the facts speak for themselves. These are not denied on health and safety, they can't be denied on environmental impacts or visual effects. We think it's a wonderful site, given the size of the property, the screening, the location. So that's why I'm here today, obviously.
You know, I mean, so we, we publicized this list before, the thirty-seven locations were in the Connecticut area where there's.
Yeah, they need to be updated, that's.
That's five years old, seven years old.
Yeah.
That's on our website.
Uh, we've published it, I'm not sure it's on the website, well, you know, it's available. Uh, I would like to make two other comments about, uh, schools, one, um. Just that I wish he was building a brand new school sixty-five yards from, uh, from the RTT antennas downtown. Um, and also, um. Was my other point, the, um, in two thousand ten, the town council considered a lease from AT&amp;T to put antennas around the water tank. Uh, and, uh, so the carriers have had their eye on this location for years. Again, the carriers have to work with what's possible, um, in terms of finding a location that will serve the area, but also. Be available for a landlord who's willing to, so if there's a private property owner in the, in the area, you know. Ray, I identify others, but I've talked to four institutional owners over there. Um, and, uh, some of them work topographically, topographically. Um, others would require a higher ta, tower to, to work, um, so. Um, again, this is just the beginning, um, they've been working, they've been working with us for seven years. Um, and, um. Uh, again, ideally, we would have the other location on the east side to talk about as well. And, and the center location, if we have to go back to Irwin Park, we will, but I'd like to avoid coming back to Irwin Park, so.
Question for you. I'm, I'm relatively new, as I mentioned, to New Canaan. So just bear with me here, I, I apologize, you might have the answers to this, you might have already shared it, I'm just, I'm just not aware. I agree with you with facts and data, I work in technology, I work with data, so accuracy, accuracy completeness, like, it helps. Gear us towards an informed decision, right? We might not always agree on it, but it's something that we can rely on. And I know Kevin, you had mentioned about, there's, this has happened elsewhere. Just because it's happened elsewhere doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, and the onus on us is to advocate for what the right thing is to do, and I. My father was an attorney and I've always learned that, you know, the best deal is when everybody leaves a little dissatisfied, so I want us to, you know, take that into consideration, but. Having said that, you had mentioned a couple of things, and I don't expect an answer right this second, maybe like, think about this, because I genuinely am interested. The benefit of the height of, of the monopole, you had mentioned you had originally requested a hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen, I'm sorry. But then it was reduced, I thought you said a hundred and fifty and then reduced to a hundred and twenty-five.
Um, it was originally proposed at one fifteen, but increased to one twenty-five, so we've gone up ten feet, even though we've lost thirty-five feet or so in elevation.
Okay, I got you.
And I say we, the engineers for, for the carrier network.
I completely.
They've looked at the site.
So then going back to sort of the data aspect of it, Kevin, you had mentioned the town council's been working on this for the past ten years, so. If this has already been shared, I think you guys mentioned some stuff's available, as a relatively new resident, I don't know how to access this, so if you can share it with me and everyone else, I would really appreciate it. But the data behind, I know everybody has different thresholds and definitions of success, right? And you said, you're, you know, we've, we've been very successful with these towers and, you know, we're really proud of them. And so I would be interested in seeing the research over the course of the last ten years. Cell phone service prior to the building of each of these towers, subsequently service. Post-building of each of these towers and by carrier, to know how we've improved cell phone service by carrier, and then. Subsequent to that, I think it would be meaningful for us to understand exactly what the cell phone carrier coverage is in, in New Canaan. And I, coverage is probably the wrong word, what I would say is, who has, what percentage of constituents are covered by Verizon, by AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, so on and so.
We did this survey in two thousand twelve of that, and, and we have that data, you know, AT&amp;T and Verizon have like forty percent each and T-Mobile has like twenty percent, so that's not as, Sprint used to be that part of it.
Okay, so.
So, so anyway, I, I have to ask you to.
I'm a very visual person, though, I just.
I know, but this is not decided.
That you let me know where to access the information.
This is not, well, there's plenty of information on, on the, uh, on the town website, right, because we studied this for you, the plan that we developed. Yep, so it's all, it's all there, I would also emphasize, the tower is not the problem, if you're concerned about radio waves with cell phones, the cell phone is the problem.
I didn't.
The signal, the signal, the signal that goes back to the tower is the same strength as the, uh.
Well, I'm focusing on data right now.
I know, I'm focusing on the fact of what the issue is. Right, we had this discussion at Wagner Room several years ago, and people have to realize, if you think there's a problem with cell phones. Cell phone is the problem, not the power.
Is that data also accessible in that package that you're referring to that's available on the public site?
I would encourage you to, to participate, watch the, uh, Connecticut Siding Council proceeding tonight, uh, public hearing, um. The evidentiary hears, hearing this afternoon on eighteen thirty-seven, all this is always dealt with by the Connecticut Siding Council. Um, but again, um, if you don't, if you believe in, in modern town, it has cell service. This is the issue you have, not the cell tower.
Right, but I don't think you answered my question.
Yeah.
Good question, siding council, because I thi, I think information is important and, and it'll be a process that we go through. Will the siding council discussion this evening, will that be available by folks who aren't available during that time?
I'm sure they record.
Do they record?
They record it and they post a transcript on their website.
Okay, and maybe on their website, maybe we can also put it on our website, so that would be, so that would be great, number two.
I would also emphasize that what's going on in Palo also, and around the country, is five G issues about antennas very close to, 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 uh, neighborhoods and buildings.
This is all relatively new to me, so it's an onslaught of info, so the more that I can get, the better.
Absolutely, we've, we've been dealing with this for nine years and.
You keep saying that, I don't remember. Well, this, uh, this certainly came up in, uh, in two thousand seventeen, and so, um. I appreciate everybody having the opportunity to speak, and I think it's important that, uh, many of us just learned about it just within a few days ago or several hours, so. It is a process and I hope that we'll have an opportunity to hear from more people, uh, and, uh, Ray, I appreciate that you're coming in and, and I know you've been with us for. Quite a few years, and, uh, so I, I am interested in understanding a little bit more about the options, um, that are available. And so I imagine that's going to be, is this something that we're going to hear from, uh, Ray and our community? Anytime soon, or is it going to be in September, I kind of like waiting until after the summer when folks are back and so forth.
Council takes the month of August off, so, um, September is the earliest.
So this goes from.
Well, we're going to take this up again in terms of the, the lease that we, uh. I should, I say.
Okay, and what's the timeline on that?
We'll probably take it up again in two weeks or, or in, uh, end of July, so that we, you know, you know what, what.
I'm sorry, wha, what are we taking up in two weeks?
A lease.
Lease with respect to.
This location.
This location.
In order to move this forward to the town council and P and Z, we need to have a proposed transaction. This is the outline of a proposed, proposed transaction, so.
So we're talking about a lease to AT&amp;T?
It would be a lease between Homeland Towers and the town in New Canaan, the ground lease.
Well, that's news, that's news to me.
We got it yesterday.
I know.
I just learned about this last week.
Somewhere, this is the beginning of the process, right?
Yes, I understand.
I'm not prepared, I am not remotely prepared to go through a lease in two weeks from now, and, and. Perhaps ever, all right, I mean, I'm just, I, we need more time. Have you, have you spoken with, uh, our superintendent, I know this is in Board of Ed property.
Yes, I have spoken to the superintendent.
And is he in favor of this?
Yes, he is.
He's in favor of it, on record, okay?
Yeah, the. Yeah, the superintendent's concerned. This is just the beginning. This is just the beginning. This is the
It's not the beginning, you're talking about a, a ground, a lease that we, you want to bring to the Board of Selectmen to approve in two weeks, Kevin.
I didn't say, I didn't say we're gonna do in two weeks, right?
Just two weeks. Yeah. So if, obviously, we want to hear as much public input, uh, as we can, and we're not trying to skirt it. So I think it's important that we inform what the process is and, and interested in knowing what the timeline is, and make sure that we're communicating that to, uh, the public, so there's plenty ample opportunity for people to speak. Um, so thank you for that opportunity.
Hopefully, we'll have the other, other one as well to do them at the same time. So, Ray, I think you've covered it.
Yeah, it was, any other questions, happy to answer them. Um, you know, there is some urgency with this, but I'm not trying to force it down anybody's throat. Obviously, there's a ground lease that's been provided. There'll be a review process that goes back and forth between the town's attorney and Homeland Towers.
What's the urgency?
Urgency in the sense that we've been waiting patiently for seven years, and we have a carrier that's funded. Uh, we don't want to lose the funding with the carrier, so that's our sense of urgency in a sense. We want to keep this moving forward. Uh, but we're not, this is not an overnight process.
No, keep in mind, keep in mind, you know, when we met with this carrier five years ago, when I met with, when I first took office, they said, Kevin, you're not gonna get any service in New Canaan. Right? They were only focused, I meant, on the, on cities and on, on five G. Covid changed everything. Suddenly, they realized people in the suburbs have to be able to work from home. They have to be able to communicate. So this carrier, which simply told us five years ago, I can't work, I can't do anything here, now has the money, and the issue is, do we, do we want to be a modern town? Where people have safety and, um, and, and modern communications? Because if you talk to realtors, you know, a house that doesn't have cell service won't get sold. So. Yeah.
So, so I just
All right, yeah. We'll have a healthy discussion about technology. If there was a better technology, we would be all over it. So. Yeah.
Appreciate your comment, uh, about urgency, but I, I'm not sure, is this suddenly they ca- came into money yesterday, or what, what's?
Maybe urgency is, is my personal word I'm using. Um, we'd like for this project to go forward, obviously, we understand this is a process. It's not an overnight process. We're working with the town. There's attorneys involved. When I say the word urgency in the sense that we have a carrier that's funded, if the carrier were to lose funding and we were to ultimately sign a ground lease with the town, we could not go into the zoning process because we need a carrier to go through that process. As a developer, I just can't go and decide in council, say, I'm gonna build a monopine at West School. Uh, so that's where my sense of urgency comes in. We've had a carrier that's been patiently waiting for the better of seven, eight months. Um, they operate on the annual budgets. We don't want them to lose their budget for this site to say, well, Homeland, you couldn't get a lease done with the town. We're gonna take this money and allocate it toward another project in another town, so that's my sense of urgency as a developer to say, okay, we have a process here representing a project. There's a lease that's put forward to the town. There'll be give and take on that with revisions and language and so forth. Um, but where are you going to move forward?
So you've known about this for eight months, but we're just sharing about What happens to that lease?
If the town says no, I believe the lease would not be executed.
Again, th- this is, this is the first step today, so, uh, you know, I think we have to terminate this. We have a very large agenda to get on with, and, um, so, Ray, thank you for coming, and, um, thank you for your time.
We appreciate it.
A lot more discussion on this topic. Oh, good morning, Sarah. Come on, come up to the microphone. So we, we have a huge agenda. Hopefully, we can get through this, uh.
That's why we had the special meeting last week.
Yeah. Yeah. Sarah, introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Allard from Case Study Brands. I will try and be very fast for all of you. Um, we had the opportunity last fall to do a study on the usage and the community feelings about Waveney House. And we presented to the Board of Selectmen, we've presented to Parks and Rec. Um, and today we're here to move forward with our first strategic initiative, which is developing a dedicated website for the town for specifically for Waveney House. Um, can I share my screen? Okay. Perfect, so this is a lengthy document, but what I want to go through is that we interviewed ten stakeholders. We learned a lot about how the community values Waveney House and how based on a competitive landscape, Waveney wasn't playing in the same ballpark because they didn't have a dedicated website. We came up with insights about the building and a strategic approach to say, these are the things we could do to really maximize utilization, to revitalize the house, and very importantly, to engage as a brand. And that's where we start. Um, and happy to share this with everybody, and maybe you guys could post it on the website so everyone could see it. But this is some of the insights that we came up with. Um, and today we're here to focus on engaging as a brand and maximizing utilization. And so I'm gonna go through the work that needs to be done with a roadmap for success. And so what we'd like to do, and we've got a proposal on the table, to make a dedicated website. Uh, it would have an about Waveney page, a photo gallery, it would speak to the values and the history, a calendar of all the events going on at Waveney, recommended vendors, concierge services, testimonials, and so on. The current Waveney House website lives on the town of New Canaan's website, and so it's hard to find, and it also doesn't position itself similarly to, here are some examples of the Roger Sherman Inn, the Glass House, the Bourne Mansion, all people in our competitive landscape that have really beautiful dedicated websites. So when a bride is looking to pick where she's gonna get married, the location on the town of New Canaan website doesn't come off as valuable and, you know, fabulous as it should. So here's some continued examples. Um, we also have, part of our proposal is to create dedicated branding, really to elevate and, you know, create a feeling of, of beauty that the house deserves. So we would be creating a custom logo and brand identity as well as a custom website, um, for Waveney House. There's a sneak peek. I mean, we have just ideas, a million ideas of how we could do this, and some beautiful photography we could tap into, and also a local photographer that I think we would engage to continue using for photography. Any questions?
Didn't we approve, I thought you approved this before.
No, no, we approved.
Not the website.
Not the website, just
Who approves the project we're presenting today? The research.
Research.
Got it. So this is sort of our first tactical approach to how to get you without the renovation and all of the stuff that is debatable this
And the first thing is a website.
Low hanging fruit.
Low hanging fruit, got it.
This is to be, you know, we, we, we increased the rental fee um, for future weddings, because there are a lot booked, already booked for the next year. Um, we are doing a number of things. We have Ray, um, Martin is the gardener, who's making sure that the grounds are spruced up. The Conservancy continues to do their enhancement project outdoors. Um, we have the, uh, bathrooms and the, uh, elevator project to come back to the town council probably in August or, or, uh, I think September now. So there's a lot of things we're working on to make Waveney House, the ve- the venue that it can be, and the, the marketing of, of it is a critical element of that. So, you know, right now, people go to the Recreation Department to book a wedding. It's not the most elegant process. And, um, so anyway, this, this is to begin the work on the branding and, and the website, which will further
Deliver you a full website and a brand identity, and through that, you know, I think that it continues to, to build on the engagement and maximizing the potential, so it's, it's a first step.
So the money
We would be so excited to do this, so it just is, uh,
And we have a, uh, we have a fund in Waveney House that has just about enough money to pay for this and, uh, which comes from other revenues.
You had me at hel- hello.
Oh, good. That's perfect.
I'm not quite as low, but I just
Questions for Sarah?
Go ahead.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate this. Looks exciting. Just so I can understand that it's both the brand identity and the website design and programming, that's for the whole fee of the twenty-eight thousand seven fifty. Okay, got. Um, and then the timing, I think the estimated project time I saw was eight to ten weeks, I guess, on the website and four weeks for the, um, brand identity, so those are sequential, is that right?
It's sequential. I think that we've had a head start. And I think if there was an urgency and the town said we'd really like to have this by Labor Day, we, we're very flexible. I think that summer also depends on, on the team's schedule, but um, we've spent so much time thinking about this that it almost exists in our heads. Uh, the, the legwork that going in, but if you had a specific calendar you wanted us to meet.
No, I was just curious. I didn't know if it was sequential or all the same. And then the designated point person from the town of New Canaan, who's that?
Thank you guys for, I mean, right now.
We don't have anybody yet. I'm sorry, that's the question.
Uh, so it, it says it's going, the, the CSB will work with a designated point person from the town and Waveney House to develop content for the new website.
We, we're
Yeah.
Yeah, we're working also on, on a potential part-time employee who would, uh, work exclusively for, for the wedding.
I think how, we very much come with an in-house philosophy. You know, it's not you and us, it's us and us, and so I think how much we can help you guys to create that or do due diligence, you know, we're team players and we'll make sure it works.
I guess the question says that, once you get the copy, the design, the architecture, the navigation have been approved, who will approve that? Is that back to us, or is there an individual?
No, it'll be staff function.
Staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
What we typically do is present a master document for approval with all of the content.
Okay, and then the, the content themselves, you mentioned the photography, they look beautiful, example, who owns the photography?
Well, what I think we're gonna need to do, because there's so much out there from weddings, is go ahead out and do some research and do diligence with the existing photography. It's to the credit of those photographers to be published, and so I think that's a process in itself, and I think we had talked about talking to Jane, about maybe coming Jane Viles, about coming in and doing some custom photography for us of the house itself.
And that, that custom photographer, the, the ownership of that photography will be of the town.
And a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
Anything that's on your website, you're gonna own, and it'll be a credit line to them, so I think there may need to be a photography budget. If somebody wants to sell it to us, we'll do our best to keep that to
Okay, two last questions. Um, the maintenance of the website, is that going to be from the town, or is that something that you would continue?
I think that what we usually do with any partnership is we train whoever's managing the website to empower them as much as possible, but we can backstop anything. So if there's something that's a complicated function, we charge hourly. It's not a monthly maintenance.
We do that with the town website.
Yeah.
We know how to maintain it once
Okay, so, so you don't have, there's not an ongoing maintenance fee?
No, there's an hourly charge if you need our help.
And then the square space cost, I think that's a new vendor, perhaps, roughly?
I think it's around two hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Perfect, okay, great. That's all my questions.
We find that platform is just the most user-friendly, and there's no, your website's a brochure, and there's any functionality, if there's a calendar, we use a plugin, but we work with a lot of nonprofits, and we try and make sure they're empowered to get their stuff done without making it complicated.
Super, great.
Hey, Kevin, can you remind me what the cost for the elevator is?
Tiger?
Tiger, what's the cost of the, the way, sorry, sorry, the Waveney elevator? What's the, what's the cost?
Currently slated at one point six million.
Now, the whole project?
The whole project for the elevator, so not just the elevator, but the whole project, bringing it
Yeah. One, one point six million.
For the question?
Yep.
I move, we approve this request to enter into counter with Case Study Brands to launch a strategic branding and website design project for Waveney House. Second?
Second?
For the discussion?
None here.
All in favor? Aye, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest, since we have some people waiting to, uh, now, our next item is the, with Lauren, but before we start that, I, I propose we move up the appointments because we have people waiting to be, uh,
Oh, yeah.
And so I would move, we, um, just amend the agenda to bring up eight, item eighteen to the, uh, to now.
Second here.
Then we'll come to Lauren. Second, all in favor? Aye. So anyway, we have, uh, five, one, two, three, four, five, six appointments to make.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, on the Board of Finance, um, the vacancy created by Neil Budnix retirement on Thursday. Um, we propose to, uh, um, have Maria Winegarden, um, move up to the regular mem- member status, uh, taking Neil's slot and, um, the alternate slot from Maria's elevation. Um, we propose to nominate James Yao, who ran for town council and is well-known to most people, and, um, so that's the Board of Finance. They are obviously subject to the town council approval, given the fact that the town council is taking August off. We'd like to get this to their agenda in July. So I will move that we appoint Maria Winegarden effective July first for a term ending November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second year.
Uh, discussion? All in favor? Aye. I move, we appoint James Yao, um, to the alternate slot effective July first, subject to the town council approval on July twentieth, or whatever their, their meeting is, for a term ending December one, two thousand twenty-three. Second?
Second year.
Discussion?
Just a discussion. I, I'll mention after we go through everybody's, but I just want to mention that I did have an opportunity to speak with all of our newer, uh, members coming to these commissions, but I'll, I'll save that until the end, but
Okay.
Oh.
All in favor? Aye. Uh, Ethics Board, uh, John Fulcristen, um, John Fulcristen just stepped down as the president of the Exchange Club, which is how we know him. I didn't know him before. Really, he became president of the Exchange Club, um, two, a year ago, two years ago, a year ago. And, um, so we have the vacancy that was created by the, uh, expiration of the term of the
Tucker Claus.
Tucker Claus, um, and, um, so this is also subject to, uh, town, town council approval at their meeting in July. And, uh, John wasn't able to be here. He had to travel this morning, um. So, um, town council have plenty of opportunity to consider John. I move that we make that appointment effective, um, subject to town council approval uh, for a term ending December one, two thousand twenty-four.
Second here.
For the discussion?
I'll just say that, um, I didn't know John at the Exchange Club, but we actually worked on a project together ten years ago, so I actually know him, uh, from that engagement.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. In the Wetlands, um, uh, there were a couple of resignations here, so we have an appointment of, uh, Priscilla Wakey, who's an existing alternate to the regular, um, member status on Wetlands, um, for a term ending December one, two thousand twenty-two. And, um, Katie Ossley, um, nominated by the DTC for the alternate slot created by Priscilla's elevation for a term ending, alternate term ending December one, two thousand twenty-two, so we can vote on those together, I suppose. Questions? I move, we make those two appointments?
Second?
Discussion?
Second?
Aye. And that brings us to Sue Leoni, who's in the audience here, Sue, um, and, uh, how did this vacancy get created? Jack Hawkins resigned, and, um, uh, Sue has been in town for a long time. I've known her for like thirty-some odd years, so, uh, and, uh, uh, in this case, we check with the chairman of, of the boards, commissions that, uh, so they're concurring with this, this, uh, appointment. And, um, therefore I move that we appoint Sue Leoni to a term ending December one, two thousand twenty-four in Parks and Recreation. Second?
Second here.
For the discussion?
Only, nice to see you in person, so after very pleasant conversation, so.
So, thanks, Sue, and all the, all, all the appointees here, um, who they're willing to serve, um, and, um, again, to the Board of Finance and the ethics required town council approval. With that,
See all in favor for Sue?
Like, we're not both, all in favor? Aye?
I let that slip by.
Okay. Long agenda today. Thank you, Sue, and, uh, moving on to Lauren.
Can I just, to go just quick, as Lauren comes up, uh, I just want to say all, first of all, thank you to all the candidates who, uh, were nominated, and I think they did a great job. And I think just as a part of a best practice, we did, uh, have an opportunity to speak with all of you, especially the people I, I didn't know uh, in advance, so I appreciate that. I also think not every, um, uh, chairman was aware of the, these candidates coming forward. So I do think also that it's the best practice that the, the chairman and the
Who didn't know?
Um, in, I spoke with John Fulcristen, he hadn't spoken to the, uh, chair.
There's, there is no chair. Oh, well, again.
Yeah, so I just think it's a part, never mind about the individuals, but about the, just the best practice going forward, anybody coming forward, it would be great uh, that those candidates do speak to the, to the chair, and I think that
That's the only one, was the ethics, can I?
Um, I think almost everybody else Um, I think almost everybody else had an opportunity to speak with the chair or somebody else on the board. So they were aware of um and and but not in the case of the ethics board. But anyway, I just think it's important that uh the number of best practices come out, we're still working on uh coming up with a way we can communicate with the community about uh open positions. So more to come on that and will be part of our discussion with the board of selectmen. So thank you all.
Yeah.
What what do you, when you say best practices, what do you, what, what are you?
I think we have a practice that works now. So I, you know, I think the issue really is, we're gonna try to solicit more unaffiliated voters because the R T C and the D T C um do their jobs nominating people. Um, but there's forty percent of the electorate that's unaffiliated. And um I've been actively, you know, trying to um recruit people who are affiliated because otherwise they think they have to join a party.
That's, that's certainly they don't have to. So the the broader we get that out in terms of the messaging, not either just for me or for any one of us here, uh, I think the better. So that's one best practice. The second best practice would be making sure if before you or I join any board, we know the other members of the board or at least get to know and understand what the process is. And I encourage that as well. So lots of things that we think we can come up with a more uh formal process that I think will benefit everybody.
With that, Lauren, good morning.
Good morning.
You have exactly seven minutes.
Perfect. I need lots of that. Um, thank you for having me, Lauren Patterson, President and CEO of New Canaan Community Foundation. Um, thank you also for for the town for partnering with the New Canaan Community Foundation on what I think is a really thoughtful uh and meaningful process to invest some of our town's ARPA dollars in our nonprofit community, both in town and in our neighboring towns, but particularly to serve New Canaan residents. Um, and I think responsive and proactive ways. Um, we as a community foundation have been around since nineteen seventy-seven. We work with dozens and dozens of nonprofits every year. We fund eighty to a hundred annually. Have great relationships with those in town and nearby. Um, a very active board of twenty plus staff and about a hundred volunteers or so each year that get to know these organizations. And so when um we started early conversations about a year ago at this point in time, um, and uh talked with how could we listen to our fellow nonprofits and others in the community about some great potential uses of ARPA dollars? We co-hosted with um with the town with T D A C and the Chamber of Commerce last summer, a listening session with nonprofits and local businesses. Took some lessons from that and then talked further with the town about how we might partner to support a grant application process so that nonprofit organizations could throw their hat in the ring for some of these um very uh useful dollars. Um, we kind of fleshed out what that would look like. And ultimately, the foundation hosted an online application process. We spread the word to again, that kind of reach of nonprofit organizations um that we've gotten to know over the years. And this past January received thirty-three applications for funding. Um, some of those have have gone directly to town already for consideration. Um, but otherwise
We pull out the large ones, anything over a hundred thousand dollars, I think we pulled out so the town could focus on individually rather than was it two fifty or a hundred thousand dollars? Do we pull out four or five?
Um, probably it it wasn't a a set threshold, but I would say one fifty and up probably went directly to town. Um, or there were instances where there was already a town relationship. Um, it made most sense for the town to then pursue that particular funding relationship. Um, the foundation constituted a committee of volunteers. Um, included staff, board members, and some of our most experienced grant volunteers that engage with us on an annual basis. And then we looked together as a committee at that group of organizations that were still before us. Um, went through kind of a month-long process of vetting those uh broke into small teams to go deeper on particular issue areas, talked with those organizations to vet further their use of dollars and then put before you um this list of recommendations.
So um Kathleen and I have both served on the community foundation board, so we know the grant process. And that's why we recommended we partner with the community foundation rather than trying to have town bodies go through these nonprofits ourselves. We don't know them nearly as well as you do. So this has been a great process. We thank you for all your time and effort and all the volunteers who helped. Um, so the one question we have is um, do we want to do five hundred eight, two thousand six hundred in total? Um, toward with the idea of saying, well, let's keep it at five hundred thousand, which requires to shave these. Um, but I'm not sure what point in doing that. Um, and because uh, so questions for Lauren?
Did the um, did all the applicants get um money or or assigned money? Or were some of the applicants denied?
So some applicants we are proposing to decline.
Okay.
Um, some we are proposing the town deal with directly. Um, again, for kind of particular relationships. And then others, we are proposing to decline. They did not fit the particular requirements of the ARPA dollar. So not enough of a tie with response to the pandemic, not serving a significant number of New Canaan residents. They didn't meet the the funding criteria.
Does that include um organizations that nonetheless get money from the foundation?
They could, yes. So in many cases, there is overlap, but not exclusively.
Right. I mean, this is, this is a brilliant effort. And thank you for, you know, the efforts of the foundation. I think it's, it's great to have you guys be able to do the due diligence that otherwise the town would have to do. Um, and you have the experience, um, the background, the knowledge of these institutions. So thank you for your
Oh, thank you for the partnership.
Do we, do we, by the way, is there a breakout of the five hundred plus thousand dollars?
Tablature, the very bottom, the very bottom.
Was it?
It's the last item.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, so it's not, sorry.
It's separate, so it's from the appendix.
The very bottom of the
Got it. I didn't see it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so.
Just a quick couple of questions, Lauren. Thank, I want to echo, uh, thanks. There's no way we could ever do this. Just to be honest, uh, so thank you for doing that.
On the town council.
Exactly. Uh, and and so I I note here that there is a couple of projects here operating and capital and so forth. And so, well, just maybe just a few operating. When, when they're asking for operating funds, and as I know, as we've gone through this before, but it's sort of a continuation. Do you think they'd have to come back to either the foundation or other sources for operating?
So the the committee did have very meaningful conversations about this question. In the cases where it's operating, I think it's because it's touching, if you will, multiple projects across the organization. Um, but they were specific one-time influx of dollars.
Okay.
So um, and this, this did come up too, because there was the question of how do you make whole again, an organization that faced significant losses during a pandemic and simply couldn't operate? And where the committee came out was to say we are not in the position to analyze the finances of each of these organizations and be able to compare them apples to apples. How do we know it was more painful for organization A than B, for example? Um, but what we could talk to them about, and this is what happened in some of the follow-up conversations, was if you had these operating or project dollars, how would that transform your organization going forward to come back stronger? To serve the community in a different way, to revitalize and bring more tourism into downtown, for example. So that's um maybe not a perfect uh, you know, comparison for, but for operating purposes, that those are some of the examples.
That's fantastic. And then as you go through your own process, then for the the foundation, I presume this is sort of totally separate. You continue your sort of regular review process and and donations regardless of whether or not they got ARPA funds.
Okay, yep, great, great. Thank you. No further questions. Thanks for everything that you've done.
So Lauren and I participated in a session over in New Haven a few weeks ago about public private partnerships between municipalities and nonprofit um in general. And um, you know, this is a supportive example of working together with the people that had the expertise with their nonprofits. And uh so th- this has been a great process. We and we still have another twenty-five percent, twenty percent of the ARPA funds to allocate. Um, and we have uh some of the large items we pulled out for the nonprofits. Uh, and have we received the the second tranche of the money by by now? Later this week?
First of all.
Okay. So um, for that, um, thank you.
Is this on the web- uh website, Kev? Okay.
It's in the public package. So thank you again for all your efforts and thank you all. Thanks to all the volunteers.
But when does this um, these funds, are we the first to approve it or the town council have to go through it?
Well, subject to, subject, it has to be go go through the board of finance and the uh their subcommittee.
And then they'd be available.
Both of them. Um, I suspect they'll do the same thing we're doing. We're accepting it um entirely without making any changes or reducing the total amount.
Yes, or, yeah, right.
It's just that we wouldn't possibly
Grateful, thanks. Yeah.
No, thank you. Not uh, not all towns are having this sort of foresight to partner with their nonprofits. This is very significant.
So I move we approve the uh funding recommendations, I'll call them, from the community foundation. Um, as we just discussed, um, which we're recommending to the board of finance and to the town council for approval of this allocation of ARPA funds and the total amount of five hundred
Eighty-two-six.
Five hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred thousand dollars. The details are on the public package so that people can brace and others can look at it and publicize it to the public and it'll be on the agenda for the board of finance on the twelfth, then on the town council for the following week. And um I move, I so move, second?
Second.
For the discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Very much. That brings us to series of public works, contracts, et cetera. Good morning, Tiger.
Good morning. So this first set of uh blanket purchase orders is for the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, Jim um needed to be at the plant this morning, so he apologizes and asked me to step in for him. So we have a a list of our um blanket purchasers that we would like to uh to have approved. The majority of them are um previous contractors that we work with or previous vendors. And what were our average spend from the previous year was, the only thing of note is uh we are in our third year of five for our sludge hauling contract and uh the increase there from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three is basically an increased slight increase in volume and a fuel surcharge that was uh that is added into the contract. We have a couple of contracts in there that are priority products, meaning that we can only buy from one vendor um for our phosphorus removal. That's uh Atlantic Coast Polymers and Holland Company. And then we did um go out to bid for um some of our chemicals and our flow metering. Uh, we received four bids for the our chemicals. The low bid was Borden and Remington at thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars estimated cost for the year. And then Williamson Pump and Motors, we received two bids and that that uh contract is for ten thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and five cents. The rest of them are uh what vendors that we've used in the past. Um, we'd like approval. If you have any other questions, please let me know. Questions?
Um, just one. And and that's actually that this is for the water pollution control facility, right? Item six on the agenda. So uh we, that we weren't able to link through on our uh portals to that actual information. So um, I, you've read us off most of them, but I I would just say in general, and this will come up on the others as well. Um, anything, these look all within reason, the sludge hauling, as you said, this was that part of an existing contract?
That's, this is year three. Yeah, you had, you approved it two years ago as a part of a five-year, it was a five-year bid, um, and you approved it. And then uh going forward, we had, you know, we have it here as just a, as a recap.
So what I'll recommend uh for your consideration is that anytime we have um anything which is a new contract, we should uh not put it in the blanket purchase order agreements. And so to bring it forward. And even just some of the large ones, as you've just done now, even if it's a renewal, just as you did, uh, just comment it because I don't want these blanket purchase agreements. We we shouldn't want the blanket purchase agreements to like sort of hide anything, not that they are, but any of the larger um contracts.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. So other than that, that that one is fine.
So just for clarity, what we, what we did was fine, you're saying.
So this one, as you said, you just pointed it out that this is an existing agreement. It it's, uh, thank you for sharing that information. And and then we'll come to the others as well, which you've got some new contracts and some existing ones.
Right.
And it just, I would say when, if we were going into contract with anything new, that should be brought out as a separate item, but particularly of a certain size, you determine what the size is, but it's some of these that are six figures, I think would be appropriate that they're brought to us.
Yeah, we have two for the transfer station that'll be, that are new for two-year contract renewal. Those are, and those are separate.
Okay, good.
Question, Nick?
No.
I move we approve the request from the um superintendent of the sewer plant to create blanket purchase orders in the amount of four hundred fifty, four fifty-three thousand oh sixty-seven fifty-five for services and supplies as just described by Tiger. Second?
Second here.
For the discussion? All in favor?
None here.
Aye.
Uh, the next item is for uh blanket purchase orders for the transfer station. Don Smith is here um in case there's questions, but uh uh what we have is a a renewal of our contract within Viro Express for our garbage hauling. This is year four of a five-year contract. Um, basically the numbers are uh the same, five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars from last year to this year. The the hauling in the brush of and bulky material, that's actually um item number fifteen. So I'll postpone that until item number fifteen. And I think we could do the recycling and the construction debris at the same time, if that's okay with you, Kevin. And then the rest are small um, small numbers uh based upon prior year expenditures and uh our regional agreement with uh Clean Harbors for twenty-five thousand dollars for our household hazardous waste um day and uh for the subsequent ones that are at other municipalities whereby our residents can go there and then we reimburse those municipalities for the cost of our residents.
So Tiger, we're talking about item seven and item fifteen?
Well, I I'll bring up item fifteen when we get there.
Okay.
I think it would be better. That way I can talk through that one because it's a large contract.
And where's the list online? For the seven.
Number seven.
Number seven. You didn't get this list?
No, we do. So that's
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's just loading. Okay.
Sorry. Sometimes when they come up on an Excel, they don't come up very well.
Yeah, I got it now.
We'll, we'll try to transfer those to a PDF instead. That way, I think the PDFs come up better on the tablet.
Do we have uh the transfer station, um, a drop-off for paint?
No, that comes during our household hazardous waste. People can, the
Because Darian does.
Your normal paints can just be opened and dried and then thrown in regular, in the regular waste. Oil-based paints, we ask to come during household hazardous waste day.
Which is?
We have it once a year. And then there are seven other municipalities that we that we contract with that have their days as well.
You can go, you can go to Darian or other places when they have their
And on the dates.
But I thought Darian, you can drop off anytime.
Darian allows that, yeah. They they have a uh, we have a problem with uh
Why don't we do that?
We have a, we we don't have an area to actually have the storage facility that paint care would need. We've
That's what Darian has. They have a storage facility.
They have an area set aside for that, has to be locked and out of the weather. We don't, we don't have a capacity to look or the the space right now. We're trying to see if we can actually bring that forward. That and other things that uh that are space required. At present, we don't have that capacity.
Okay.
I'm good with the purchase order requests.
Any questions? I move we approve the request from the superintendent of the transfer station to create blanket purchase orders in the amount of seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars for supplies and services as described by Tiger and as on our tablets. Second?
Second.
For the discussion?
None here.
All favor? Aye.
Bye.
Tiger, thank you.
No, thank you.
Meat Park Patio Extension.
Right, so uh what we had was, we had a planted area at Meat Park um that we uh removed and actually uh created some additional space for uh pedestrian way um space during COVID and then for additional tables since um there's a large weight at Meat Park and it seems to be quite utilized quite well. So we felt the need to try to take, take out that that planted area and turn it over into more patio. We did it temporarily, as I mentioned, with uh with crushed stone. Problem with crushed stone is that the children are getting into the crushed stone, throwing it all over the the patio, which turns into a slipping and tripping hazard, or they throw it into the grass, which is problematic for when we try to cut the grass. Um, so as you can see, I didn't show the second picture, but the second picture was that basically over the top of the wall was all the stone that was uh on the patio was now in the grass area. So we went to Fortino Escalante, asked for a price um to expand the patio to that entire footprint, the Bluestone Patio. He came back with a price of thirteen thousand dollars. We added a contingency of two thousand for a total of fifteen thousand dollars. To give you an idea, back in two thousand and thirteen, when we did another portion of the expansion, um it was three thousand dollars per a hundred square feet. If I add in the fact from twenty thirteen to now, his number is pretty much dead on based upon the work that we're proposing to do. So uh
The grass there looks a little used. Is that used. Is that because of the?
Both. Yeah, it's because of the stone and and the area, the we're looking to further try to change the walkway entrance as well, because people are coming around the wall and walking up the grass instead of walking up the walkway, depending upon where you park.
Right.
So we're trying to make that. We're looking at possibly making that another walkway, which will connect with which connect with the island in the middle to get you to the playground. So this is probably probably phase one of a two-phase.
Is two would be that walkway?
Yeah, we have a little bit of a problem. You can see that you see that cap that's there, that round.
Yeah.
Cap. That's actually our the waste pump, right? So that's our that's our chopper pump that actually takes the waste and sends it to the pump station. That has to be lowered, so it's a little bit of a larger project in order to do that.
So that will be lowered?
That will be at the time that we go to do that second phase. Yes, we'll lower that down and move it in order to allow us to get a little bit better of an entrance into the patio, into the lodge.
Questions? I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Fortino Escalante, Inc. for a total of fifteen thousand dollars, which includes a contingency of two thousand for the Mead Park Patio Extension as described by Tiger.
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor? Hi, thank you. That brings us to Joe Zygrinski, Latham Buying Heat and Power Project. This is our fourth.
This will be our fifth.
Fifth. And our probably our last.
Go ahead, Joe.
All right. Good morning. So as part of the town's energy initiative, we have a capital project to install a CHP unit at the Latham Community Center. So MHR and the Department of Public Work has negotiated with Aegis Energy to provide a thirty-five KW Combined Heat and Power Unit. Aegis has competitively bid previous projects for the town and we're the successful bidders for the town CHP at the Highway Department, Wastewater Treatment Facility, Saks Middle School, and we've negotiated the the Town Hall in Latham. The CHP will be the same size, those that are running at the wastewater treatment facility and the highway garage and the one that we're commissioning now at the Town Hall. Electrical and heating savings generated by this project are estimated by MHR Development to be between fifty-five and sixty-five thousand dollars a year, which makes a simple payback for the system approximately six and a half years. So we're looking to enter into two contracts, one with Aegis Energy in the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars plus a contingency of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars for a total of three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I'm sorry, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars to complete the Latham CHP project. They're the they're the contractor. And we also would like to execute a contract option with MHR Development to provide design, build, oversight, and construction administration services for the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars, sixty cents, plus a contingency of three thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars for a total of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents. And the funds for this project are currently available.
Just a couple of comments before we we take questions. So the important thing of this, this is not just powering Latham Center, it's powering the lights on the on the water tower fields, which are costing us an arm and a leg. But this will significantly reduce the cost of those those lights. Also, we talked to EverSource yesterday. They've contracted with Burns to install the gas line into Wavine Park. And as we learned a couple of weeks ago, they're not only going to allow us to do Latham Center and the pool, but they believe they can bring the gas all the way over to Wavine House and the paddle paddle.
Dennis.
Ports. Ports. So that was really a plus. And so this is we're trying to get this all done for the heating before the heating system. And so questions for Joe?
So what Kevin, what's the cost or Joe, what's the cost of the lighting on that?
I think it's like twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars a year. You know, we we
Yeah, so.
We'll talk about Dunning later because the Dunning, the solar we're doing on the high school roof, the Dunning Stadium.
Right.
We have a bill there that we used to be paid for by the what do they call that thing? That ran the stadium.
Enterprise?
You know, it's the what was Dunning?
Enterprise zone.
No, no, Dunning was a it was an orphan that the bill had to be paid for by the sports Booster Club and stuff. And so we took that over as part of the MOU we entered into with the Athletic Foundation and so this is just designed to, you know, find a way to provide the energy at the least cost for the future. And these these YAMAR machines in Japan are off the rack and Aegis has done a great job for us at the Highway Garage and the Trent Water Treatment Plant. And as Joe mentioned downstairs, the it's about ninety-eight percent complete. We fired up fired up soon to power the Town Hall. So this is the I'm not sure we'll do another one of these, but
What?
Why? Because.
You're done. What's what's the timing on this? Sorry.
Well, again, we want to Aegis Aegis wants to get on with it so we can get it operating by October, November. So.
Okay, the heating season for the heating season. We'd like to get it up and running by November.
Okay.
And this will be the last of the expansion project for EverSource as well. Any questions? I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter to contracts with Aegis and with MHR Development as Joe described for a total of three fifty-nine, four ninety-eight, plus three thirty-seven thousand, six twenty-nine, sixty for the CHP project at Latham Center as Joe described. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Thank you very much.
Joe. Now we come to parks and recreation and Cheryl. And actually, why don't you go up, John and Todd as well? Go ahead, Cheryl.
So good. Good morning. I am pleased to be here to put in front of you Mr. Howe, who is currently the interim Parks and Rec Director, and we would like to move him to permanent. Over the past couple of months, he has been working very closely with the staff, working with the community, the commission, really starting to understand his role. He has come up with some great new initiatives that he's going to be putting forward over the next year. And I think he will make a great new addition to the Parks and Rec staff.
And Todd also.
I'm gonna we have to get this approved and then we'll go on to Todd.
We have to fire him before we.
Exactly. We have to move him on and then we can move to the left.
We have to create a position. Okay, I got it. John's done a great job. As we all know, you know, filling in the steps of the big shoes of Steve Banko. Now we have a combined Director of Parks and Recreation. And so I I'm very happy to to see John take on this this task of operating both. And I think we have a great team. So any further questions for John?
Just John, as you look at the taking on this new role, are you seeing and obviously we'll talk about Todd in just a moment here, but any other staffing requirements you think you you see in the foreseeable future?
I I foresee adding a couple more employees, but probably through the budget process next year. I'm still trying to figure out a few things. In the next few years, I potentially see some retirements in both departments. So.
Okay. Okay, great. Yeah. Right. Well, we're certainly pleased that you're here once again. So I think that's great.
I'm pleased to. Thank you.
Wow, friendly face. It's great to do. You know, I just it's it's tough to replace Steve Banko, as we all know, but you're the guy who can come as close as is achieving that as anybody because you've been you've been here. You understand the town. You understand the parks and now you understand the recreation. And I'm looking forward to the initiatives that you Cheryl mentioned that you're going to bring forward. Change is always good. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So the real test is this weekend with the family.
I'm working on the weather right now.
Don't screw it up. Anyway, congratulations, John. We're all very happy to vote for this. I move, we approve the request from the Human Resources Director to name John Howe. Currently the interim Parks and Recreation Director as the permanent Parks and Recreation Director for the town of New Canaan. Second.
Second here.
Discussion. All in favor? All right. Thank you, John. Congratulations.
Now we have to fire.
Now, okay.
Now we have an open position.
Now we have an open position. I would like to present Todd Declan. He is currently the Assistant Superintendent of Parks, and we would like to promote him to the Superintendent of Parks. I think when we hired Todd, we really saw that he was going to work well in this department. We saw him being able to acclimate well with staff, staff respect him and to be here today to recommend this promotion. I am very happy to stand behind it, and I think he's done a great job for the town.
So I would say, you know, Parks covers a lot of things, not just the several parks we have, Wavine and Irwin and Goanis, but also shoveling snow at schools and and, you know, a lot of a lot of territory the parks covers. And so these are big shoes to fill too. And as as John knows, you know, occasionally you'll get a call from the first selectman saying, why can't we do this?
Occasionally.
And anyway, you know, I'm very happy to have Todd take over and maintain our parks, the great standard that John has established. So questions for?
How long have you been with us?
Ten years.
Ten years. Okay, right. It's a great testament to when any organization, but particularly a town, when we can elevate people from within the the ranks. And so glad to see both of you moving on to the the next step of your career. So congratulations.
And this will also open positions within the union. So after this, John will go, we'll post some positions and it's we'll be moving people up into other positions. So.
Great.
Question.
On here.
I moved. We approve the request from the Human Resources Director to promote Todd Declan to the position of Superintendent of Parks from Assistant Superintendent of Parks for the town of New Canaan. Second.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Now, John. Is this a is this a parks or a recreation matter?
This is parks. So the recommendation for bleacher repairs and even a replacement. When we took over Dunning Stadium from the from the Booster Club, we want to have the bleachers inspected. And while we were doing that, we inspected all the town out, all the town outdoor bleachers, which is something that should be done every year. And we came up with a fairly substantial list, you know, when when bleachers are twenty years old, in the case of Dunning, twenty-five years old, I'm sorry. And then even the water tower bleachers that are fairly new, there's still annual repairs on them. So doing all this work will get us up code compliant and also we'll we'll have to remove some of the bleachers because they don't even come close, but the safety inspection is what we want. We we don't want anything bad to happen. So. So we we called in a company called Hussey Advantage. They 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 work on a contract price. So they came and did the inspections. They also will do the repairs next year going forward. This this will cover us for this year, but next year we'll have them come in and they will probably inspect and repair all at the same time, because then it will be minor, minor things. We're hoping that in the next ten to twelve weeks, they'll get receive all the materials that they need and you'll see in the numbers that there's a five thousand dollar discount. That's in case if we do all the work together.
So so I'm looking at the list. Where where is 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 there a a particular location that you know, that is going to absorb a lot of the costs here?
Dunning is a substantial amount of it. That's about fifty-seven thousand dollars worth.
So this is to replace bleachers that are twenty-five years old?
It's a repli- actually, yes. The bleachers that are going to be replaced are actually a Connor Field.
Okay.
They're the they're the oldest ones. They they need to have a fence around them. They need to have backstops so that a kid can't slide through. It's that type of.
They're they're wide open.
And so it's 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 virtually impossible to take one of those bleachers and upgrade it to today's standard.
So we're going to just replace those.
Just replace it.
But but you said back to Dunning, you said fifty percent of it was Dunning is.
Fifty-seven thousand of this money is going to be used at Dunning. It's the fact that they're twenty-five years old. They're the biggest bleachers we have. They're.
So they're going to be replaced in total?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. They're going to be repaired.
Repair.
They're still in. They're still in. It's fifty-seven thousand dollars, but they're still
Okay.
good quality bleachers. We we have some issues, but we don't have issues that would make us even think of replacing them.
Okay.
And for those that may be replaced, I guess, in in Connor Field, is that cost included in this hundred twenty thousand? So, okay. Thanks.
This this will do take care of all our bleachers. There'll be two sets that will actually be disposed of during this work.
Great.
And this is in the budget. I don't recall this in the budget discussion last year.
It's in it's in the capital budget. Since it was such a large number when we when we.
Okay, so it is in the capital budget.
It's in the capital budget, in the approved capital budget.
Yes.
That there was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Hussey Advantage in the total of about four hundred and twenty thousand, one seventy, which includes a contingency and a discount possibly.
Second here.
As described by John. For the discussion, all in favor? Hi. I'll go to you, but I'm getting exhausted this. This agenda is too much. Solar power.
Like budget season.
My God.
Worst.
Budget season in June.
That's why next year we have two meetings scheduled at the end of June. Like we just did a special meeting. Joe's back.
I'm back. Logan. So I'm here to get a seek approval for a solar power purchase agreement, approval of an agreement between the town of New Canaan and Davis Hill Development to provide solar power services at the New Canaan High School for the Dunning Field Lights. So this is a forty KW system that'll live on top of the high school gym annex and it'll offset the the meter for Dunning Stadium. The PPA rate is basically what we're we're buying is seven cents in over twenty-five years. I mean, it will save us fifteen thousand dollars a year over the twenty-five-year lifespan, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So we'd like to enter into this contract with Davis Hill Development.
The Board of Ed is using Davis Hill to do the other medium-sized solar project on the brand-new roof at the high school so that we 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 this really went out to bid for for PPAs and.
Went out to bid and we we mirrored the we took the the buying power from the schools and applied to this and we mirrored the contracts.
And we really didn't consider buying this as opposed to doing the PPA. This is our first PPA for the town, I believe. Board of Ed has only done PPAs on the school roofs. So this is locking in for the next twenty-five years, seven cents a kilowatt hour.
Yes.
Great.
Questions?
Does this require Board of Ed approval as well?
I know you you sent out approval or you sent out an email to them.
Well, since we own the building.
But.
High school. The superintendent before has had me sign his power purchase agreement because the contractors want to know that the owner of the building agrees.
It's good for it.
So in this case, I don't think we need the superintendent, but because we own the building. But we will we'll do whatever we need to to get the agreement signed.
Right.
You sent it over. Nevertheless, you sent over the agreement.
But the other part, the date, the same Davis Hill development on the other part of the school, that's not come through us. That's gone through the Board of Ed, correct?
That's gone through the Board of Ed.
Okay, so is this just the other half of the?
This is the annex roof. They have a much larger piece on the high school proper.
High school, yeah.
And it's a medium-sized system. This is a relatively smaller system just to power the lights.
Gym that the new gym.
Right. I understand. It just seems like it's all the same roof. I didn't.
It it's a separate area of the roof.
Separate area.
And a separate meter. So we're taking advantage of the fact that the town pays for Dunning Stadium, so it's going to offset that meter. So it's tied to that meter. That's that's why the
Okay, I understand.
It's going this way.
Thank you.
Okay.
None here.
I move, we approve the request from someone. While it works. To enter an agreement between the town and Davis Hill Development to provide solar power services under a power purchase agreement as described by Joe, and the solar panels will be on the annex of the New Canaan High School roof to power Dunning Field Lights. Second.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor? Hi, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Tiger's back.
Good morning again. This is for fire alarm installations. Bill Ospens on vacation, so we'll bring this forward. Security Solutions is our is our vendor at present, our contracted vendor for all our fire alarms and our security systems. At present, our contracted vendor for all our fire alarms and our security systems. And we are looking at replacing. Some outdated systems and installing others, there was a list given. We have six installations at the Nature Center, the Gorse Pavilion, Irwin House, the Irwin Barn, the Paddle Hut at Waviney and the Parks Department Barn. Gives you a listing of their installation costs at forty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars, we added a contingency of four hundred and thirty-five dollars for a total of forty-six thousand dollars. And the funding for this is in our twenty-twenty-three budget. If there's any.
Questions for Tiger?
None here.
I move the request. Public Works to enter into a category of security solutions for a total of forty-six thousand dollars, which includes a contingency for the. Fire alarm installations as described by Tiger, second?
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor? Hi.
Thank you. So the next is a approval of a two-year contract for our construction debris and yard waste disposal. Excuse me, we went out to bid, we received three bids, City Carding and Viro Express and Oak Ridge. City Carding was the low bid at two hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars total. That's based on what our approximate tonnage is per year and the. A pole cost, meaning every single time they take a dumpster out of our yard, it costs us a certain amount of money. City Carding was the low for our yard waste at fifty dollars a ton and a hundred and ninety-five dollars a pole and our construction debris at. Thank you, at ninety-eight dollars a ton and a hundred and ninety-five dollars a pole, to give you an idea of where we were last year. For yard waste, we were at forty-five dollars a ton and a hundred and seventy-five dollars a pole. So it's gone up by five dollars per ton and twenty dollars per pole and. Our construction debris was eighty-five dollars a ton and a hundred and seventy-five dollars a pole, it's gone up thirteen dollars per ton and twenty dollars per pole. So last year we were paying, we had a contract of a hundred and ninety-four thousand fifty, this year is two nineteen seven sixty-six, so it's about twenty-three thousand dollars more. The monies are currently available on our twenty-twenty-three budget and we would like to go forward with a two hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollar contract with City Carding. Adding a fifteen percent contingency for thirty-three thousand dollars for a total of two hundred and fifty-two seven sixty-six.
Tiger, I don't, what's the Oak Ridge bid on the yard waste, I, I don't.
Interesting, so they bid it at a cubic yard basis instead of a tonnage basis for some reason. They actually wrote that into their bid, so then we had to do a, a calculation as to. The number of poles at a hundred and forty-four for a forty-yard dumpster, it came out to five thousand seven hundred and sixty yards, which then gives you your, their number of a hundred and sixty-one thousand two eighty. It was very difficult to. Meld apples and oranges with a cubic yard basis when we're asking for a tonnage basis at that point, so the only way to do that fairly was to. Base it on the amount of cubic yards that we would necessarily have everyone else pull.
So. Uh, uh, what would, is the twenty-eight dollars? Is that per ton?
No, that's per cubic yard.
So what's, what's, so, you know, what would that be, what would that number be?
It's a, it's a difficult calculation to go back and forth between cubic yards and tonnage based upon what your material would be. So it was difficult for us to determine, so we had to basically go by a ton per yard. Go with that, go with that ratio. So that's why their number is, is very skewed.
It's kind of weird that. Somebody would respond to a RFP and not follow the parameters of such RFP.
Correct. In essence, you know. Yeah, it took them out of the, took them out of the running.
Right.
They followed suit on the construction debris, we just don't know why they did it on the yard waste per se.
Yeah.
You know.
Just a quick question, City Carding, our existing contractor? They are, okay, and it was a two, so their two-year contract was up and we're rolling it forward, okay. Thank you. And they, they locked in for this rate for two years, yeah, they don't come back, okay, thank you.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with City Carding for a total of two fifty-two seven sixty-six thousand. As described by Tiger.
Second.
Further discussion?
None here.
All in favor? All right.
Can we do the recycling one?
Yeah, go ahead.
One, all right, thank you. So we went out to bid at the, the exact same time for our recycling materials, it's a two-year bid. Interestingly enough, in this one, we actually had a tie. Off the first go, when we received that Oak Ridge and City Carding were both sixty-five dollars a ton and two hundred and ten dollars for a pole. We spoke to our attorneys and Doug Lamonte said that we should go back out with a letter to both contractors asking for them to give us either. Hold their price or give us a lower price if they wanted to at that point. Since both of them have given us good service in the past, so we went back and City Carding held their price at sixty-five dollars a ton and two hundred and ten dollars a pole. And Oak Ridge actually came in with a lesser amount for the pole cost than a hundred and eighty-seven dollars, therefore they became low bidder. All in, it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. This is a change from last year, last year, our contract was a hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, we had. Eighty-three seventy-four per ton, now we're paying, we'll be paying sixty-five a ton and last year we were paying a hundred and eighty-nine a pole, we'll be paying a hundred and eighty-seven a pole. So there's a slight savings, they have approximately twenty-four thousand dollars. So we'd like to go forward with the, the contract with Oak Ridge for a hundred and seventy-one four ninety-seven, with a contingency of twenty-five thousand for a total of one ninety-six four ninety-seven. I'm sorry.
I thought Oak Ridge was one forty-seven three three, the one seventy-one is the current pricing, no?
One seventy-one is, I'm sorry, that's correct, I wrote that wrong. So one forty-seven three eighty-three would be the contract.
Plus whatever the fifteen percent.
Twenty-two thousand dollars would be the fifteen percent, so it would be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand three eighty-three. Thank you for that catch.
Details.
That's what happens when you rush in the morning.
So the amended amount?
The amended amount is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars, so a hundred and forty-seven three eighty-three for the contract, twenty-two thousand dollars for the contingency for a total of one six nine three eight three.
Further questions? I move, we approve the request from Public Works or to enter into a contract with Oak Ridge. As described by Tiger for a total of one sixty-nine, whatever there. Three eighty-three. Eighty-three. As described by Tiger.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Okay, Tiger, what else we have?
Last one. The, this one is the Dunin Stadium Enterprise Zone. In partnership with the Athletic Foundation, the Park and Rec Department and the High School Athletics, we received proposals from. Four consultants, Richter and Seegan, being the, basically will be the go-to person and then. We will coordinate with the architect, the, the drainage engineer and the traffic engineer. For a project at Dunning Stadium, in essence, it's a reconstruction of the press box, the concession area, the bathrooms. And then the campus area in between Dunning and the Water Tower turf fields to try to. Make it a larger enterprise zone whereby if we're running tournaments, we can run tournaments on all the turf fields at once and the. The players and the spectators can navigate safely between the, the venues and will be, since we'll allow. Access to the concession and specifically the bathroom areas, we'll actually have an additional bathroom area. At that location, we can necessarily remove the porta-potties. So all in, we had a, we have a proposal from Richter and Seegan for the landscape architecture and for the overall site management of seventy-eight thousand. T L B Architecture LLC for a hundred and sixty-two nine twenty, that's, there are an architectural firm that will be taking care of the concession stand and the bathroom facilities. McCord Engineering for thirteen thousand two hundred dollars, they'll be taking care of the site drainage and site plans. And S L R International for three thousand two hundred to help us with traffic negotiation as far as. Looking at what, what better ways to actually bring traffic in and get them out safely. The total for all four was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, we added a fifteen percent contingency of thirty-nine thousand dollars for a total of two ninety-six three twenty. And this cost will be split between the funds that we set aside for the N C A F in the Parks Capital Budget. And a contribution from the Athletic Foundation itself. Fifty-fifty split for a hundred and forty-eight thousand one sixty from the Parks Capital Budget of which we have three hundred thousand, actually six hundred thousand. From the past two years allocation and a hundred and forty-eight thousand one sixty from the N C A F, making a combined total of two ninety-six three twenty.
Questions? I feel bad. Allocating one minute.
We talked about this before, so.
From our standpoint, I think we should have every meeting two hours long.
I mean, this is a. This is a wonderful moment, I, I remember walking around. The campus with Alex Whitten, member, our former lacrosse coach, and that. Was the germ of what eventually became the New Canaan Athletic Foundation, because we were looking to. Put up a bubble, because the lacrosse and football folks wanted something and then, you know, fourteen years later, you know, we're now. Going into phase two or phase three of a significant spend, what is the N C A F, it's, it's fifty-fifty? Just here or will there be additional, additional project costs?
There will, there'll be additional project costs, this is for preliminary design, then we'll get into final design at that point in time. We'll come back through with the final design. Proposals and come forward and I imagine at that point in time would be a fifty-fifty split again. At that point, we would get into, the, the first phase is going to give us. Project costs, about a thirty, thirty percent view of project cost, thirty percent done with the project in its design phase and tell us what.
What do we think, what's the ballpark for the, for the whole project?
Oh, it's two and a half million to three and a half million, easy?
Yeah, I mean, I figured it would be.
Depending upon how, yeah, depending upon what they find and what they see in the preliminary engineering and, and the architecture and how the project. Rolls forward. There'll be some significant costs as far as just trying to navigate the traffic in and around the area in front of the stadium and then between the two stadiums.
And how is it going to work, i- is the N C A F going to defer to us or to you with respect to?
Yeah. D P W will be the project manager and will be working closely with the N C A F. We've had several meetings already, we plan a kickoff meeting, the moment that this is done, we're planning a kickoff meeting probably for the morning of July five. To then sit and meet with each one of the, the consultants and then kick the project off, get everyone's concerns and wishes out on the table at that point in time. And then move forward.
And what's the anticipated timing?
We'd like to be in the ground or in, you know, right after graduation in June of next year, so the timeline is quite tight to move forward. But that's, that's the goal is for a, a June start and a September finish, so that we don't interact or, you know.
Excellent, excellent.
Hurt the stadium.
So I moved, we approve this request. From the New Canaan Athletic Foundation and the Parks Recreation Department. And the New Canaan High School Athletics to enter into a contract with. Richter and Seegan, T L B Architecture, McCord Engineering and S L R International as described by Tiger for a total project. Design cost of two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars three twenty to be split fifty-fifty with the. With the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. Second.
Second.
Further discussion?
None.
All in favor? Hi.
This may be a record.
No, I'd like to, I'm exhausted.
I'm in terms of spending, it may be a record.
I.
Add it all up.
I'd like to congratulate Tiger, I mean, this represents an enormous amount of work on all these projects that he oversees and, and does, so I. Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Amen.
Getting this, moving forward, that brings us to. The lease purchase agreement that we do annually for the Board of Ed, the amount is eight hundred thousand dollars, not six hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, I took the, I took the listing of their estimates, not what their budgeted amount was, so the budget is eight hundred thousand.
This is primarily for their, their.
Technology needs, Chromebooks, laptops, smart boards, things like that.
So we. We do the lease on the, on the town side for them, so. Any questions?
How much does this replace of all of that equipment, the, the computers, the smart boards and so, is this like a rolling every three years? Yes, yeah, as they, as they age out, then they replace them.
Right, I thought this was on the Board of Ed's side.
The budget is, but they don't have the, they don't have the leasing capacity, authority to do it, so it comes on, that's it, yeah.
Basically like a capital project.
From a budget.
Exactly, yeah, the budget, they have the budget in place.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, you're correct.
Good.
And in lieu of reading the whole, because you would have to read the whole authorization, you can just vote to. Wave reading it and, and vote it into the minutes.
We can waive it?
Yeah, I checked with legal to make sure, because it's a long one, so you can waive it.
I thought we read it.
Well, if you want to read it, you can.
I read it.
But you have the right to, you can vote to waive it.
And do you know about the eight hundred thousand, what it was, say, three years ago when we looked at this lease before?
Oh, I don't, it, last year, I only looked at last year, last year was six hundred thousand.
Six hundred?
Yeah.
Is it replacing about the same type of numbers?
Yeah, there's a couple of other additional things in here. I, I, I don't know the full details with I T, there's a legacy point refreshing of it, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, what were some of the, they had some sped. Expenses for replacing technology, so the main ones are the laptops and the Chromebooks. Thank you, typical.
So I move that we approve this request from the Public School. Administration to authorize a resolution. For the execution of a lease purchase agreement to acquire computer equipment for the Board of Ed. We'll wait reading of the entire resolution, but. Any question, any? Second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Thank you.
Just to item number nineteen, contracts on the tablets, any questions?
None.
Okay, legal fees on the tablets. I would note that we're over budget primarily because of the eight thirty G. Matters, almost exactly. So. Didn't anticipate those.
We have one month left, right, because this was May.
We do. We're going way over budget.
Yeah.
I, I move or approve the legal fees on the tablets.
Second.
All in favor? Bye.
Bye.
I have no comments, I'm exhausted, so. We'll go to exec, do you have any comments?
I have no comments.
We'll go into executive session for two matters, one is the. Real estate negotiations that continues, we will come out and vote on two items on the playoffs matter. And then we will also discuss in executive session the. Quest for ARPA funds from the.
Why, why do we need to go into executive session for the?
Because security, you know, the superintendent, when I talked to him last week, he said he would never discuss school security in, in public. So I think. Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, the Board of Finance and Town Council will probably do the same thing, so.
Leon, Paul?
Yeah, again, it's this board that decides. Yeah, and, and, and we may vote on this matter when we come out of the next session.
Do we have to come out twice or no?
No, we.
Everything and then come out.
You know, we're, we're actually invite everyone in, even. Actually, why don't we do, we'll do the police matter first so they can depart and then we'll. Okay, so at, at ten forty-one, we're going to invite in Anne Tucker. Cheryl, Tiger. And, and.
Yeah.
Leon and Paul Foley. Yeah. Are there others on the? Thank you.
That's me, the iPhone.
Oh. Two iPhones, so. Mike, that's still you?
Yes.
All right, hold on, please.
Have we finished this yet?
Okay, we're back.
Okay, ten fifty seven, we came out of executive session and we will vote on two matters. Two matters. One is um, a recommendation to the Board of Finance and if necessary to the Town Council. Uh, of funding um in the approximate of a hundred and ten thousand dollars for school safety um. Measures by the Police Department. And are we also recommending the uh additional? Five thousand dollars?
It's part of it, part of it.
And the five thousand dollars as reflected in Lee, Chief Lee Karlekowski's memo. Uh, and uh, the Board of Finance may decide not to handle this as ARPA funding. They may decide to do it in a different manner. But it, uh, we're supportive of the concept of, of uh. Funding for the uh school safety. Um, so uh, uh, I, on that motion, it's intelligible. I. Second, for the discussion, we all, we all support whatever we need to do to support the s- school safety. I, it's unanimous. And then um, on the uh playhouse, uh, there's two items we discussed in executive session. One, the finalization of the letter of intent, which has been under negotiation with respective operator um, playhouse. The Playhouse LLC, um, which is owned in part by Cinema Lab in New Jersey and um. We're prepared to uh. Sign that letter of intent, subject to the Town Council approving funding tomorrow night at their meeting, which is on a public hearing for tomorrow night. And then secondly, the lease, which um, is basically agreed to with the, the operator. Uh, that the Town Council will take up tomorrow night. And the Town Council tomorrow night will be asked to approve ARPA funding in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. One million dollars of capital bonding and also to approve the lease. So we are voting on the letter of intent uh, subject to, that I am authorized to sign, subject to. Town Council approval of the funding and um, we're recommending the lease to the Town Council, which is their purview to approve a lease of town property. Also tonight, the P and Z Commission has an eight twenty four referral. Um, to get a report on leasing property to uh, to the operator. So on that. I'm moving, we go on both the letter of intent and the lease recommendation.
Second here.
Second, further discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, that's unanimous. We have a playhouse project, almost. And um, with that, I suggest we adjourn at eleven AM on the dot.
You suggest or move?
Move. Second, alright, thank you. What a whole agenda we had today. Thank you.